Good evening. I'd like to call to order the North Branford Board of Education meeting Thursday, August 19th, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Roll call?
Chairman Papa Volter. Vice Chair Natrio.
Here.
Secretary Siana.
Here.
Janet Bosomo.
Here.
Jeffrey McMillan. Vincent Mace.
Here.
Cynthia Rex. Luke S. Clay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any visitor's comments? Okay, we're going to do the reps at this time, so we move on to the minutes. Do they want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the previous minutes, although on page 2 of A of Exhibit B, they were approved previously by Jeff McMillan and Janet Bosomo. However, I will reiterate and make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th and July 22nd, 2021.
Second. Any discussion? I always look at you for the minutes, man. Nothing?
No.
Uh, roll call? We can't, we really shouldn't do it together.
Okay.
Because just in case somebody wasn't here, it was not up.
All right, then I'll, again, draw my first motion.
We actually have approved the ones from the 13th.
We have approved the one from 13th, but it's on her 10th.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to reapprove the minutes of the July 13th, 2021 special meeting as submitted.
Second. Any discussion?
Vice Chair Natrio.
Yes.
Secretary Siana.
Yes.
Janet Bosomo.
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes up to July 22nd, 2021, Board of Education as submitted.
Second. Any discussion on those minutes? Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Natrio.
Yes.
Secretary Siana.
Yes.
Janet Bosomo.
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Extention.
Okay, then we're moving on to the resignations. Somebody wants to make some motions on the resignations?
I move to approve the resignation of Ms. Jan Cora, English teacher at North Branford High School, effective July 26th, 2021.
Second. Any discussion? Does anybody mind? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stating. Good.
I move to approve the resignation of Ms. Kathleen Van Vulten, art teacher at North Branford Intermediate School, effective July 26th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the resignation of Ms. Suzanne Mello, school psychologist at North Branford High School, effective August 11th, 2021.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I will provide you with names at the September board meeting. All three positions have been filled. I want to commend the administrative team when they did get the resignations. We went through the process of notifying the bargaining units and then posting and getting an applicant pool, getting people in over the last couple of weeks to refill and fill these positions. So kudos to all of them for doing that. It's always a difficult time in the summer months when you go to a late resignation. We did have a couple of more. We're actively pursuing highly qualified people to fill those positions, and I'll let you know in September of how we've done so. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like you provided us with Exhibits C and D, some advisory positions and some coaching positions.
So they are listed. You do not need to take action on these. These are there for your information. As you can see, the offerings primarily at the high school and middle school for the 21, 22 school year, and then for our coaching positions that TBDD obviously were working to fill, and there are a couple of positions that we have filled, so we're moving along.
There isn't a list here for the coaches, for the sports coaches for the high school? Are they all filled? Are you still looking for coaches?
For the fall?
Yeah.
Uh, there's...
Field hockey assistant needs to be filled.
I think that's, I think that's the intermediate.
That's MBIS.
Oh, I see.
We don't have a list of the North Branford High School ones.
No.
I was just wondering if they're all filled?
Yeah, the coaching positions are good.
They're good. Okay, well, that's good.
So.
That's good. Okay, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, we're moving down to the financial report, Miss Wong.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no donations to report, unfortunately.
So I did hand out a small summary update on the new financial system. We have begun setup the past three days. My staff accountant and myself have spent basically on Zoom calls with the folks from Tyler. We laid out the, they laid out for us the agenda, expectations, and pretty much a draft version of a calendar, and we began working on the chart of accounts late yesterday afternoon and all day today. So it's a big undertaking, but so far, so good, and I think we've hit the ground running. So I will keep you updated as we, as we move along. The tentative date, just to throw it out there, for the new financial system to go live is actually July of next year. For the audits, we've had our field work completed, as you know. We do anticipate that the auditors will be back in the fall, and the additional dates will be decided next week when we jump on another Zoom call with the auditors. They'll be coming back to complete their testing, as well as look at the EFS, which is the state financial report, and testing that they usually do for special education and the PSIS and other things that they look at. In regard to the EFS and the ED 141s, I'm currently working on those. Those are done, those are due to the state by September 1st, so that's also a priority for me at this point, and so far, all is on track and going well. For the financial report for 2021, as you know, last month I gave you a summary report of that. Currently, we're at about $90,000 remaining, but that number continues to fluctuate as we close out and, and pay invoices on the purchase orders that were open, so we'll keep you updated on, on that as well. For 2122, you know, we're just starting out. We've gotten some of the blanket purchase orders in the system for things like utilities and the health insurance and some of the bigger items. Of course, the schools have been ordering through the summer. In regard to payroll, we're in the process now of setting up the balance sheet for our teachers, because they're, you know, they'll be getting paid of the first, I think it's the first or second weekend, first weekend in September, as well as our paraprofessionals who are coming back and our nurses. So all those people need to be set up with their new salaries, the new TRB calculation contribution amounts, the new health insurance rates. So there's a lot of work to be done prior to running the actual payroll, so we're in the process of doing that now.
So the next payroll that they'll get is in September?
The first payroll that your 10-month staff will receive will be in September, yes. Okay, so in regard to the actual financial report itself, if you look at the summary, Object 210, Health Insurance, you'll see a very large encumbrance there. That encumbrance for $3.5 million encompasses the anticipated cost for health vision and dental for the remaining months of the year. We've already paid for, it looks like probably July and August there with $689,000 expended. So that's for 10 additional months. That negative number will come down with employee contributions every payroll. So with the large amount of staff returning, the employee contribution amount goes up, and by the end of this fiscal year, that negative should be wiped away.
Got it.
In regard to severance, Object 229, this expenditure actually is going to be moved back into fiscal year 2021 because that's where it was encumbered, but we did pay to retiring teachers who received accumulated sick time in July, so our payroll has to post it as of the date that we paid the check, but we'll move it with a journal entry back to the fiscal year in which it was encumbered, so that negative amount you see in that object will not be there next month. The water, right now, it's anticipated, Object 411, that that will be slightly over budget, but again, it, we're so new into the fiscal year, we based it off of last year's expenditure, so we'll keep an eye on it, but I'm sure, you know, I don't think it'll fluctuate much more. I anticipate it to go down from the, from the overage that's there. Building Improvement, Object 720, this is a expenditure for the handicap ramp at the Auger House, and so we did not budget for that, so that's why, that's what that expenditure is there. I will ask for a budget transfer at a future meeting to clean that negative up. And Equipment, Object 730, $5,100 is for supplies and tubing for the unit ventilators at Tuckett, and $1,300 is for student desks at Jerome Harrison. Again, both were unanticipated, so they were not budgeted, and again, I'll clean those up with budget transfers at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Miss Wong? Okay, moving along. I'm going to go out of order and just go to G under the authority to hire, because I do want to acknowledge where we are at in the process prior to the start of the school year, but before doing this, at the July meeting, I read to you and shared information regarding our new director of Student Services and Special Education. You'll see that there are a couple of new faces in the audience tonight, and I'm really pleased that Sarah Alberti is here. She's in the very back row, if she wants to wave. There's Sarah. So we, we're off to a busy start, and she has hit the ground running, and we've had a number of meetings, and she's had the ability to, to meet and transition with Suzanne Wright. It's been seamless, so you'll be hearing quite a bit as we get into the start of the new school year, but I just want to highlight a couple of things, because some of you didn't get this information. Sarah was the director in Middletown, has an extensive background as a speech pathologist. That's where she, her bachelor's degree was earned from Ithaca College in Pathology and Audiology, master's concentration Elementary Ed, so she has that dual certification, which is, I think, really critical for understanding for any district on how we function and operate. A master's in Communication from Southern and Communication Disorders, her O92 from Sacred Heart, and then her Advanced Studies at Leadership from Sacred Heart. So a wealth of background from different educational venues, sizes, and, and so we're thrilled. We welcome you, and if you want to just come up, we always do the circle handshake of, or it doesn't have to be a handshake, a hello to the new board members.
It's not a handshake.
It's not a handshake, unless they're comfortable with the handshake. It's up to them. I, I always put that out there. If they are comfortable, if not, then they'll wave to you and...
I can wave.
I'm perfectly fine with a handshake.
You're okay?
Yeah. Give me one of these here. Give me one of these. You're gonna dance next time.
That I won't do. But I think that I should have some training first, so maybe do it first then.
Then you'll know what to, you do not want to see them dance, trust me.
I do have to.
Well, I'm not speaking for bad, but I'm saying the others.
I want to see Jeff dance.
Dr. Wolf.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you very much. It's very nice to meet all of you. I appreciate you guys inviting me, and I'm really excited to join the team, so I, I'm looking forward to a great year and many years following.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to introduce Megan Lee, who's in the front row.
Oh, that's who's sitting there. Megan, they're killing me.
That's Megan. Megan has been with us for several years. She's a graduate in North Branford School System, originally was our special ed teacher at the high school, and then was certified in English and headed up our English department, taught advanced placement English at the highest level at the high school, earned her administrative degree, and she moved over as the interim at MBIS and has been hitting the ground running with Mr. O'Rourke all summer long. We had the high school team administrators working over there as well when the internet and the phone services were incapacitated during the building demolition. So they've collectively worked together, and Ms. Lee's been a great addition over at MBIS, and it's nice to have the background of the high school going over to the intermediate school, and as we go through this challenging year together, we're all on the same page. So Megan, I'm not welcoming you, you've been here, but to a new position, so we're really excited and pleased to have you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a list of teachers that the administrators have done an amazing job. The highlighted ones at the bottom are new hires since the last July board meeting. So you've already seen the, the top portion of this list. The bottom five, four are new hires since the July meeting, and I will have a couple of more to bring to you in September. So we've been busy. Any questions on personnel? Okay. Item F, Connecticut area boards abet K.
Can we ta...
Weekend.
I don't know what everybody wants to do, but do you want to table this until, I mean, at least?
September.
I would table it until we have the market.
Yep.
At least until Sean.
I understand.
Some people at the market are strongly bad.
You do have the attachment listed there. You can look at the dollars and cents, and if you have any questions, feel free over the next month to send them to me for specifics.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Wu is not here this evening, so under summer and start of school professional development, I'm just going to highlight some of the things that we've been involved with. The administrative team and the coaching staff, along with our classroom teachers, have put in a great deal of time and effort. It's listed there, the number of hours that they've put in, but we've been involved with the Columbia Teachers College, Readers and Writers Project, Illustrious Math, Amplify Science, Google Education, and we've tried to balance that with professional training in social emotional learning, lessons, activities at all levels, K through 12, knowing that when we go back into the classroom after the last 16 months and what we're going to be starting the year with in masks and a lot of the protocols or mitigating factors that we've had in the past, we're really going to have to be sensitive and in tune to the social emotional needs of our children, equally or more importantly than the academic pieces. The gaps that we're going to be looking to assess, go back, retrain, reteach, we're really going to have to make sure that our, our teams are in tune with what our youngsters' needs are, and that's going to coincide with our mental health staff and making sure that there's enough communication and opportunities to really engage with our teaching staff to make sure that we're all on the same page. So they've been busy on page four. I've bulleted some of their highlights in what they participated in. There was over 1,000 hours of curriculum development over the summer, and I think the highlight is the last paragraph there, that we are able to diagnose the impact of the last 18 months on students' academic as well as social emotional well-being, and what supports not only our students but our staff, what they're going to need, what supports they're going to need. I will share some new information from the governor that was released today. I'm sure you, if you're not aware, there's some changes and things that we're going to be involved with before we do start the school year, and I'll speak to that. Our new teacher orientation is on Thursday, August 26th, so next week we'll invite our, it will be up to probably 26 or 27 new teachers back into the district to go through a series of workshops that will involve our Tracy and Sarah and our tech team just going through a lot of nuts and bolts things of what they have to do, but be aware of expectations. So we look forward to greeting them and supporting them as we start their new career in the North Branford Public Schools. We're concluding summer camp. It has concluded. We had a really successful summer. As you are aware, we modified our times. We kept our COVID protocols in place for summer activities. We limited some of our numbers and some of our programs, but overall, it was very successful. It was a focus on STEM activities. The kids had a great time, as always. Our staff does such an amazing job of hiring the best. Many of our employees at the summer camp have been with us for 10 to 15 years, and they keep coming back, and that's certified and non-certified staff. So I do want to recognize our two directors, Ryan Dombrowski, who is a science teacher at the high school, and Amber Lake, who is a second grade teacher at Jerome Harrison, for their leadership and for being able to guide us through the challenges that accompanied summer camp. It was the first year in two years that we were able to run the summer camp, so kudos to, to all of them. So any questions on summer camp, the successes of summer camp, orientation? We're good, okay. That being said, the town manager report under request, we are going to be meeting with the town council for the excess cost reimbursement through special ed. Ms. Alberti has met with Suzanne Wright and Martha. Miss Wong will also be going to the meeting to meet with town council. It'll be my third time going, so I think the third time is the charm, and we'll explain the data points and where we were at for expenditures with special education, the formula, the statute that clearly states that the monies expended go back to the Board of Education. So I'll keep you apprised of when we are going and the outcomes of that. Okay? The renovation project at the high school, if you have an opportunity to pull into the front side of the high school, you'll notice that the L is gone. They have successfully completed the demolition. It's interesting, I was there the other day, and four trucks were there, and they'll, they depart and leave for Ohio, so they can get to Ohio in nine to 10 hours, and they're just constantly running the trucks to get rid of the debris. So it's fascinating, and...
They're getting rid of it in Ohio?
In Ohio. That's the site, poor Ohio, but that's where it's going.
There's nowhere closer?
I don't ask those questions. It's going out of North Branford, so...
For this particular debris, we think we've considered dirty.
Yeah, it's asbestos.
There's only a small piece of filament paper on the back end of some of the brick that is considered dirty, so we're pulling that out and trying to separate as much as possible to mitigate the amount of, that has to go through the process. They're moving into what would be considered dirty sites that they have to process properly.
So outside out of mind. Once it goes into the truck and pulls out of the North Branford parking lot, it's gone. It's not coming back, so...
Most of it's our dirt.
Right. So then we'll, the next part will be a lot of the site work in preparation for the foundation removal, and then obviously pouring of the foundation and the steel work. So we're hoping by the end of September, we're going to start to see some real headway in that project. I don't know, Jeff, Beth, if you want to comment on...
So we, as you said, we are nearing next phase. We have completed the bidding process for concrete as well as structural steel. We actually had a special meeting today at 5:00 p.m. in regards to those two contractors, those two bid packages and accepting the winning bid. As of right now, we've had both winning bids that move out. My policy has been authorized to sign off on those bids and go to get the next phase going. So our, our concrete should be coming in. They're going to start building up the I-beams and the trusses and the flooring and everything with the steel, as you should be aware, it's, it's quite a process. Some of it will be done preemptively and then stored for the next phase of the project, which would be the gymnasium, which is really different, a whole different set of trusses and it's kind of a separate, it's built out, but for the most part, the, the parts that are going to be going up this fall and into the spring, we should be ready to get going very soon, so it's, it's happening. Coming along very soon.
So the teachers' parking lot is all closed off, obviously, because of the construction. Where are they being moved to, down by the intermediate schools? Do we have enough space?
So all parking spaces are numbered and will be assigned. So Jimmy Lovelace met with the administrative team.
I saw someone painting numbers. I was wondering if that's where they were going.
And DADCo has come in, so we have a plan in place. That will be going out electronically and through the mail to all parents, and we're looking at some different drop-off and pickup procedures, staggering the times a little bit. Our highest priority is getting the buses in and getting the buses out.
Right.
And then having the parent drop off in that flow. Obviously, you're not going to be able to cut through, so they've really done a great job, the administrative team, in coming up with a cohesive plan that will work for our bus students and our drivers.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Awesome.
Doing good shape there. Okay, any other questions on the building project? I'm going to move to the Auger House. As you are aware, we're in the process of, as Miss Wong mentioned, we are going to put a steel handicap accessible ramp on a home. We're also going to put in a alarm, electronic alarm system, fire alarm system, like that with the fire marshal and the, the building, building manager for the town, but I know it's tied with the town. We are in the process of putting the sheet rock in and the flooring, and all of the appliances from the high school life skills room are already there, and they will be in place after we complete the sheet rocking and painting. So it's all handicap accessible. We widen all doorways, so it really is something that we all should be very proud of, and I think the town will get great usage out of a, a house that was standing vacant.
Nice to see being used.
So we're, we're excited for that. We're excited to get our students in there to be active during the day. So that's my update for the town, town manager request or request in the renovation project. I do want to speak to what was released today with the masking requirements. As you know, until September 30th, per the governor's executive order, we will be required to be in masks. What was released today is that all teachers, staff members, certified, non-certified, anyone that comes into our buildings as an employee or a volunteer has two options, either to be vaccinated or to be tested weekly and show proof of a negative test each week and every week that they are employed with us.
So if somebody chooses not to get vaccinated, who's paying for their tests?
They would be responsible for their testing, and they would be responsible for getting it to us. So what we are going to do is we're going to query all of our staff members who, everyone will get the same email. We already have the list of the vaccines that are currently in district for certified and non-certified. We have a database for that. So we will be working with East Shore Health and notifying those employees what their options are prior to the start of the school year and that they have to comply in order to come on rounds. We are not going to be a testing site at this point in our facilities. It would be for K6 only. Personally, I don't recommend that we have the testing sites in our elementary schools. I'm more comfortable with if there is a concern of a child having, having the parents accompany their child to a place where they're comfortable with having testing done and then returning those results to us. Some larger districts are doing it. I, I'm opposed to it. I'm open for feedback from you, if you wanted to come in and sit down with me at any point and talk about it. We're in compliance with everything else with our mitigation, and our team has met. We will continue to meet. We're meeting again on Monday with all administrators, and the conversations will be around, in this scenario, what will we be doing for distance learning for a, for a quarantined student who happened to be? So we're really going to have some in-depth conversations Monday, and I'll give all that information to you. information to you. It's not made in a vacuum, and we have to make sure that we take into consideration our teaching staff, our learners, and our administrative team with our ability and the capacity to be successful in doing this. We want our students back in the buildings. That's the most important thing, is to get them back in front safely, in front of a teacher. Teachers that are vaccinated will be able to instruct without a mask on. Okay? So they still will be required to be outside of three foot. It's now one to three foot circumference around students and employees, but they will be able to remove their mask if they are vaccinated. So it's...
But students keep them on?
Students are in their masks. When they're outdoors for recess. Well, to the 30th.
30th, and then we'll see if there's another mandate.
We'll discuss that. If they go out for recess or for PE, the masks can come off.
Okay.
And safety with sports, the CIC has released their guidelines, where to go and everything. And there is the flexibility of taking the mask off when they are outdoors. So we're going to continue to be vigilant. We got through last year. We were successful. We hit the ground running. We were able to implement the distant learning protocols when we went home in March, and then had a very successful year last year as well. But now we're looking at more students coming back, because we were running at about an 80/20 split with 20% being homebound with instruction, coming back into the building. We're minus 13 classrooms at our high school due to construction. We're still going to use multiple areas for large gathering, lunch. We're going to separate. We're going to use the gymnasium and the cafeteria to keep our students separated. So we're going to be creative, but we're not going to be cohorting. It's going to go back to more of a normal flow of the school with administrators and teachers having to be more vigilant in distancing, masking, and things like that.
So the younger kids aren't going to cohort at all?
No.
So they'll go to the cafeteria and eat?
They'll be separated.
Versus being in the classroom?
No, we're in the classroom.
Oh, okay, so you are doing that, okay.
Yeah.
So the little ones will stay in the classrooms eating. Are you doing the outdoor tents too, intermediate school?
I've kept the tents. So I'm going to continue. They're still out here. We've repurposed them for summer camp, but they'll be going back to the schools, and we'll have the tents throughout.
Is it too soon to know? Like, are we going to do back-to-school nights? Are our parents allowed in a little bit more if they're wearing masks? Or we don't know yet what that's going to look like?
Mondays, Wednesdays, we have a laundry list of things. And we really wanted to wait until as late as possible, because the Governor came out today.
Yeah. Which is understandable.
It would have been purple. So those are the types of things that we're really going to...
Sit down and discuss whether or not you're going to have more. Okay.
You'll have more information about, like, are you going to do remote instead of snow days? Are you going to still do every Wednesday?
We cannot do electronic snow days issue. So it's a snow day, we need a snow day.
Are you going to still do half-days on every Wednesday or is it not?
We've reduced the half-days, so we were able to increase by one per month, and we do not do a half-day if it's a vacation month. So I think instead of every Wednesday, it's the usual Wednesday plus one, unless it's a vacation month, December or Thanksgiving and the other.
And then you're going to determine what to do with kids if they have to quarantine and how we handle their education.
Correct. And that brings the union into play with the memorandum, and now we have to revisit that. Our teaching staff and union has been very flexible. They've been very accepting of everything that we've requested, and that's why we were able to be successful last year. So we're going to work that out.
One thing at a time.
Cindy Tarillo, our nursing supervisor, will be an active part of that meeting on Monday, and obviously with everything she's done over the summer with information. And we are going to get our health advisor, Dr. Nolfo, our district medical advisor, more actively involved with quarantining and with requests for not having to wear the mask for medical reasons. We're going to have him be a real guiding force on whether we're going to accept it or not. Any questions? More to come. It's going to be constantly evolving as we go through it, so.
It's really difficult. We all want to go back to normal. We have to do the best we can.
In a safe way. Yep. Okay, that's it for my report.
Okay. Let me move on to committee reports, negotiations. We will go into executive session. Budget and operations, no meeting. Worked on the questions, busy planning, no meeting. Pensions?
We take it? Pension, met. We met with our advisors at Grand Holton. We went over several suggested fund changes in the pension program. Some were accepted, some were tabled due to some shared class changes that we felt were imperative to explore with proper data. So we'll push those to the next quarter, and really was no reason to rush it. They were preemptive suggestions. Everything looks good. It's a pre-status quo. The market is looking good somewhere. We're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Policy, no meeting. ACES, no meeting.
They had a meeting, but I was unable to attend.
Okay. Building committee, do you have anything else to add?
No, we pretty much, I mean, that's moving right along.
All right. Communication, no meeting. And before we go to executive session, anybody have any visitors present? Anyone saying anything?
Welcome back, administrators. You really didn't leave, but it's nice to see you.
Go to the board.
I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work over the summer and, you know, everything that they've been doing to try, that you all have been doing to try to get things as normal as we can for the kids. And it's really appreciated. I know you sometimes work hard in the summer, not even in the school year. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Okay, then.
Oh, and the portables are down?
Portables are long gone.
Yeah. What over there?
The raccoons lost their home. Got little suitcases headed to the hills.
How about the stuff?
We safely relocated the raccoon to a nice home.
That's nice.
You personally did this?
I didn't taste it. No, no. Something's in the way of my contract. The raccoon thing is one of those.
All right, then. Somebody want to make a motion? Go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
Yes.
As per Section 1-206A of the collective general statute discussed agenda, four A negotiations.
Nine, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, nine? Wow. Moment of applause.
Second.
Oh, second?
All in favor? Aye.
What year was that school? Is that fifth grade? Did you drop a new one?
Go back to session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between the North Branford Board of Education and the North Branford Federation of Paraprofessionals, Local 6152 of the AFTCT, AFL-CIO, for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Vice Chair Anthea? Yes. Secretary Seana?
Yes.
Janet Bosom?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent Maitre?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 130354, Connecticut, Council Number Four, AFFCME, AFL-CIO, Custodians, for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion?
Was that a mediation resolution or was that a?
Mediation.
All right. President, after you recognize or not.
If you want to say the mediated, if you want to read it with?
Read it again. I want to...
It was a mediated contract, not a negotiated contract.
Okay, so I'd like to approve the mediated contract between the North Branford Board of Education and Local 130354 of Connecticut, Council Number Four, AFFCME, AFL-CIO, Custodians, for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Vice Chair Anthea?
Yes.
Secretary Seana?
Yes.
Janet Bosom?
Yes.
Jeffrey McMillan?
Yes.
Vincent Maitre?
Yes.
Beth, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just want Scott to, for all the people out there watching the great meeting, to read it the first thing through for those in case they missed it.
September 1st. Be there with a smile on. With a mask.
Okay, then our next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 16th, 2021. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Marcia, could I get your signatures on the contracts?
Oh, yes.